I'd like to now call this meeting to order. The Village of Deerfield Board of Trustees Meeting, August 18, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro, Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Greenberg.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a call.
If we could all please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes of our previous meeting of August 4, 2025, the regular board meeting is in motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chargers report.
This is the July 2025 Treasures Report. Represents 58 percent of the year. Still going good so far. Just a few highlights for tonight. Year-to-date net sales tax exceeds both of the prior two years. Good news there. Just scanning through some of the details, it looks like it's largely things costing more as well as some additional Internet sales tax collections that we're getting as people buy more online versus in person. Water and sewer billings increased from last month. Pretty typical this time of year. We'll see that happen again for the next few months. The general fund revenue also includes quarterly dispatch billings for Bannockburn, Riverwoods, and Lincolnshire, as well as quarterly billings for our SROs, School Resource Officers, from District 113 and 109. Budgeted, totally expected, but just worth noting that that is in fact happening there. Notable expenditures in July include construction and engineering costs for the various projects happening throughout town. We made contributions to the DBR Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau. We had some Family Days expenditures for our festival. It was well-attended. We had an outfit for the PW Bread Truck 604. That's the bread truck that you've heard Bob talk about a couple times this year. Previously, we bought the chassis. This was the, I guess, the box of the bread box. And we also had some repairs at 839 Todd Court. Large expenditures to come include the village's contribution to the police pension fund, debt service payments, and budgeted transfers to the refuse and infrastructure replacement funds.
The expenses that you talked about for Family Days, those are annual typical expenses. So I know we incurred those, but nothing unusual about those.
Yeah, nothing out of the ordinary. They do a separate report to the board, kind of summarizing that. But yeah, budgeted expenditures that all were anticipated.
Does anyone have any questions for Eric? Thank you. Bills and payrolls, they're motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Public comment. Now is the time where we offer the public an opportunity to make a comment that is not on our agenda. And I see that Mr. Marwick is here to offer some comments.
And Mrs. Marwick is here.
And Mrs. Marwick, yes, thank you. The Marwicks are here.
Thank you, Mayor Shapiro. I wasn't going to come today until I was driving down Wakegan Road last Friday, and I almost had a heart attack. I saw the Hobby Lobby sign was down. They had a sign up, "Go to our location at Dempster and Wakegan," and I think it's Niles or Martin Grove. And they even took it off Google Maps completely. It's like the place never existed. Unbelievable. And if the dump closes too, that whole south end, you have the trampoline park, which I don't know if that's open yet or not, but I checked that out too, a little bit about the Sky Zone. So all you have basically, there will be a sales tax generator down there, is Office Max, which isn't much. As far as, and I actually kind of expected the dump to close. I was really stunned when it was Hobby Lobby. Talked to my friend in Phoenix a little bit about what grocery stores we go to. He prefers Safeway, which is Jewel. I prefer Fry's, which is Mariano's. And both of us, we go to stores where there's covered parking. They have solar arrays over the 9th Street and Glendale location of Safeway, and they have canopies over the Fry's at Tatum and Shea. And even in the winter and the summer, you do not want to park your car in the sun and then take groceries when it's 115 degrees in the shade. So that's a big advantage to that. And as far as being on the corner, I mean Jewel made a big fuss. They wanted to stay in the corner. This is about 10 years ago when they rebuilt the store. They said, "We're associated with the corner." I know where all the grocery stores are within five miles. I pick the one I like. I like the one that, there's one much closer, a mile from me. If 20th and Highland, there's a Fry's. I don't like that location. I like the location seven miles away, and I can drive 80 miles an hour. Oops, don't tell the Arizona Highway Patrol up the 51 through Dreamy Draw. But I get to go to Tatum and Shea. It's a much larger store. They don't run out of stuff. They have better selection up there. It does Fry's Signature Marketplace. So again, I don't bother with most of the other locations. I don't like them. And I vastly prefer the one location. It's about seven miles, only takes me about eight minutes to get there. So it's a minor issue there. The problem is that when the developers or landlords or tenants like Jewel come in, they don't really care what's best for Deerfield at all. They don't give a damn. All they want to do is maximize their profits, get the most rent, get the highest sales, whatever it is that their metrics are. And if it's bad for the Village of Deerfield, or whatever community it is, maybe they don't care. So it's your guys' job, when a developer comes in with a bad idea, and especially when the community comes up against it, it's your guys' jobs to push back and tell them, "This is going to be derogatory to our communities. This is going to be detrimental to our community."
I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, yeah. And just say, "You know what? You can't do it another way," and push them to do what's best for Deerfield, and not just rubber stamp what they want.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up tonight.
Thanks.
Don't tell us what kind of car you're driving out there, because then someone will pull you over, all right?
No, in Deerfield, I can't say drive it over where I want.
Watch yourself.
All right.
Because Deerfield has marked seatbelt violation, cellphone violation tickets.
I meant in Phoenix, yeah, right.
Than the 1.7 million people in Phoenix.
Any other public comment? Have a good evening. Reports. Item 2570, reported by the Police Department regarding personal mobility device regulations. We did adopt an ordinance in May about this, and at that time, we said we'd come back and review this 90 days thereafter, which takes us to tonight.
Yes. Good evening, Board and Mayor. As the mayor said back in May, we did pass the ordinance referenced the motor-driven vehicles. That came after a couple Cow meetings, an initial board meeting on May 5, and then again on May 19, when it was adopted. As the mayor said, when that was adopted, 90 days later, the board wished that we come back with a report. Just real quick analysis, before passing of the ordinance, the Police Department responded to about 63 calls prior to that. Six accidents, two injury incidents, the suspected DUI, and then 54 general safety concerns, reference unsafe riding. After the ordinance was enacted on May 19, we responded to 20 additional calls involving motor-driven vehicles. One traffic crash, two injury incidents, eight individuals or groups of people that were located from the complaints where we were able to educate the riders on the ordinance, eight individuals that we were not able to locate. And then we had one complaint of a rider that was legally riding the device. There was no complaint on what he was doing. It was just the fact that he was riding it. And after this report was prepared, we did have one other incident that was reported two days late, reference another accident where there were no, there was minor injuries to the individual that was on the scooter. But it was in the crosswalk, so it was the driver's fault of the vehicle, but the rider of the scooter was 31 years old, so was able to be riding the scooter. I thought this was important to provide to the board here. May 20, which was after the approval of the ordinance, to May 31, we had nine calls, and we have been consistently going down in the amount of calls that we've been responding to. June 6 calls, July 4 calls, and now the August one is three with that additional one. The Police Department in the village has been very effective in their public outreach in the fact of that we did social media postings. We did, at the end of the school year, work with District 109 and 113 with their, with social media and aspects of that point. We have been at a couple farmer's markets, and then just the direct engagement with the community, either at our community roll calls or whenever we see them out there. And we do have a plan with the start of the new school year that the SROs are going to head out to the bike wrecks, if they're out there, and educate the individuals at the schools, if they are riding those devices to school, to educate them again on the ordinance and to make different arrangements and to contact their parents if they're people we've already dealt with. General observations, through those other outreaches, it has been very, very positive with the reaction that we have had from the public. The one, Farmer's Market I was at, if you remember, the one young male that spoke very edumantly about the e-bikes. He came up to me and said that he was happy with the way the ordinance read and the enforcement aspect of it as well. So that was very positive. We are going to continue with recommendations. We're going to continue with our outreach to the village, whether it's through the schools, SROs, social media. Social media is going to be a little difficult with the schools. From what I understand, 109 no longer is using social media, but we'll make arrangements with that and adjustments with that. At this time, the Police Department doesn't have any recommendations for anything changing with the ordinance at this time, but through conversations with Ben, he does have, I think, just one clarification. Doesn't change the ordinance, just makes it more clear.
Okay, before we get to that. Sure. And we'll get to that, but I want to foresee, any of the trustees have any questions or comments?
I sure do. I am still hearing from a lot of people who are detailing instances, seeing kids who are on the e-bikes and people standing on the back of the scooters, not wearing a helmet, going down the street, all the things that we talked about that we're trying to control. There's been a whole lot of people writing in to the moms, the Deerfield mothers thing on Facebook. And I think with a lot of the, the thing I tell people is, if you see something, you have to call the Police Department, because we're trying to track this. We're trying to figure out what's going on. If you don't tell us, if you don't tell the Police Department, they're not going to know. Nobody can help. So a lot of times, people are put off a little bit, don't want to call. But the other thing that I hear is that people are confused still about what the categories are, what is allowed and what isn't allowed. So I'm thinking it really wouldn't hurt, besides the outreach to the schools, which I think is terrific, if we could get some kind of a public, just to the public in general, and say, "Here's where we're at, just to reiterate, just to clarify. This is what's allowed. This is what is not allowed. This is what we want you to tell us about." And we'll try to see what we can do to protect people so nobody gets hurt. So I think we just have to keep hammering to people. I got a letter the other day saying, "Whatever happened with that ordinance? Did you pass it?" And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "I saw this and I saw that." I said, "You have to tell the Police Department." How else will they know? You know, and a lot of times, people take it upon themselves. They'll stop, they'll talk to the kids, they'll, you know, yell at them, and then the kids yell back, and it gets to be a confrontational situation, which is not what we want either.
Right.
So I would just see if there's some kind of way we can do more outreach. I think it's great what we've done, but we can't stop.
No, and, you know, just with our cases that we've documented, we're 50 percent on finding the people that we call, that are called in on, and, you know, so that, we do need the phone calls.
Yes.
The Facebook posts or all that, they're fine and dandy, but they're, by the time we see them or whatever, it's long gone.
And even when I see them, you know, I'll be in the car, and I'll be driving down the other day, driving down Deerfield Road, and there were kids on scooters. There was a young lady on the back of the scooter, and the boy was driving. Neither one had helmets. There was another boy on a scooter with them, and they were, you know, up and down on the sidewalk. They went in the street. They went back on the sidewalk, and then they went in the park. Well, we were on the way somewhere.
Right, you're not going to call.
They were gone already.
Right.
Right? And that's pretty typical. People tell me, "Well, you know, I'm on the way somewhere. I can't call." But if we can emphasize that we really don't have our arms around the problem if they don't tell us.
Right. And I have fielded many calls, and some of the confusion that I think people reading this, they believe it includes the e-bikes.
Exactly.
E1, E2, and E3. So we can work on that. One of our initial push-out social media, we can maybe revisit that one. Explains a little bit more detailed. We can work on getting that one back out.
You know, in our packet, we always get the newsletter from the Northwest Municipal Conference. I don't know if you guys had any contact with them talking about.
Maybe asked us what we're doing.
That's what I figured.
We're on the forefront of that.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, a lot of people have reached out to us, different departments. We've talked to many that used our, parts of our ordinance, and they've tweaked it to best fit their communities.
Because they're having a discussion on Friday, the 22nd of August. So we're participating in that.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
I think the department's emphasis on education rather than enforcement is going a long way. I can tell you with my day job, some of the municipalities that have not enacted any restrictions, well, after Deerfield passed, I think all the departments I worked with asked if they could get a copy of Deerfield's ordinance. And they're either working on it or considering working on it. I could tell you, I've got four cases of serious personal injury of juveniles pending right now in court. And sometimes that's what it takes for the municipality or the department to engage and do something like this. So I think we did the right thing, and like we said, while we're doing it, it may not be perfect, but it's a step in the right direction.
Anyone else?
I have a comment I wanted to make. I actually really agree with Mary. I feel like people have, I've seen it myself. So when I got our packets, I was actually surprised that the number had gone down. So what I would like to see, if it's all right, is I'd really like to see what happens in the next month, now that school's open. Because I'm wondering if maybe May, people were riding home to school, and now we get into August, and school just started, maybe we're going to see it more on certain roads. So I was, that's what I was thinking. But I agree with you, Mary. I feel the same way. I am someone who's out on our streets a lot, and as you all know, and I do see a lot of it. And I like cringe seeing these kids not wearing helmets. It makes me crazy. So I agree. But that would be my only comment there.
Okay. Bob, Jesse?
Sure. Yeah, I've just become very aware and observant since our debate, our discussion about not only e-bikes, but also bicycle riders. Because I honestly would have to say that bicycle riders, I mean, I saw someone, I think it was two days ago, riding in the right lane on Deerfield Road, blocking the entire lane of traffic, you know, basically from Highland Park up until Wakegan. So it's a lot of it, it's very, it's a very personalized thing, and I can't, and it's hard to brush with a broad stroke on this. I will also say that I've become a little bit more educated myself in that, now, I really do think it's a smart policy when you're talking about Class 1, Class 2, with no age requirement, with these vehicles that go up to 20 miles an hour. I think that's very reasonable. Class 3 with your, you know, up to 28 miles an hour, that's a really different ballgame. And for younger kids who aren't, you know, developed physically, emotionally, et cetera, this is a very reasonable policy that we have in place. I would be interested, as Jen said, as school gets underway and we see kids going to school and riding their personal mobility vehicles, that if we can kind of understand, like, how many of these e-bikes are, like, really out of code? Or are we really talking about, like, the majority of these are Class 3 scooters or bikes? Or are they, one and two, they need to be cognizant of the rules of the road and wearing helmets, et cetera? I would just kind of like to understand a little bit more about the nature of what we're seeing from an enforcement and educational standpoint.
Okay.
I think everybody's confused about what's covered.
Rightly so.
I get a lot of questions.
Absolutely. It's very confusing.
It's a new concept, and part of it is the state.
Right.
The General Assembly passed regulations on some of these vehicles and not others. And they have done, so you have this hodgepodge of state regulation, and then we have our own, because the state didn't regulate the high, you know, the high-speed scooters.
Right.
And so it's led to confusion.
Right.
So maybe a week or so ago, I went to a little meeting with other mayors and managers with State Senator Julie Morrison. And so she goes around the room, "Give me one or two, three hot topics that you want me to be aware of." This was in the top three.
You bet.
And because of what just Ben said. And because of that, I would encourage you, Brian, to work with David, to do some comms, whether it's Facebook, police, us, maybe it's a Q and A. We put something out on our website to, again, identify and clarify what our ordinance does, what our ordinance doesn't do, what the state statute does, what it doesn't do. And now would be a good time to do that, because kids are back at school.
They're okay.
They're back from camp, they're back at school, and they need to be reminded of this, and so do the parents. But it's also nice to see that, since we adopted this, there are several communities that have adopted similar ordinances.
Oh, absolutely.
And have asked us, and so we've taken a leadership position on this for the benefit of our safety and our kids. So thank you for helping with that again. And then, as I recall, we've had one, I'll call it "critical," email about the ordinance since May that's come to our attention, and that was July. There have not been any other emails that I can recall being critical. So I think if we only got one in 90 days, we're doing okay. Again, not perfect, but okay. So let's keep an eye on this, continue the outreach, continue communications, and thank you for the report. Yes?
Your comment?
Yeah, of course.
So I'm on the village website right now.
Yeah.
Under motor vehicle regulations.
Yeah.
I still don't understand it. So it's not just the police?
No, it's.
We need to be.
It's very tough.
Crystal clear.
Yeah.
And make it really simple. Literally, I still don't understand what we're trying to communicate here.
So let's work, I would encourage staff to please work on something that's, to kiss simp.
Keep it simple.
Keep it simple, stupid.
Keep it simple, stupid, in a very straightforward manner that we can, somewhere post on the website or the Facebook or the Facebook or Facebook.
This is difficult.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Jan, is there a way you could include it in your village e-blast that you do every week?
Or in the, in our monthly publication, because I don't remember seeing it.
Details is coming up.
So why don't we do several.
We had it in the last one.
Let's do it again.
I'll remind the board that folks don't focus on issues until they focus on issues.
Exactly.
Right.
And put it out there until it's appropriate.
But we got to have.
They just don't, but that doesn't mean we can't keep doing it. I'm not suggesting we don't.
Right.
I'm just telling you, we can say it time and time again, but until they see it and listen to it, or maybe they're brought to adjudication, or they're brought to, there's consequences.
Right.
Yep.
But that doesn't mean we can't keep doing it time and time again.
We're going to try to do a simplified version in the coming weeks.
I think it's maybe El Guanquin or Rolling Meadows, one of those suburbs. It was crystal clear. They had little pictures.
Elaine, we did the same thing.
We did.
But if you didn't see it, and you didn't pay attention, you didn't see.
I'm on the website now. It's not on the website.
No, it's not on the website, but we issued it. I'm just telling you.
Granted, but if I don't save my mailings, which I don't, if I'm Joe Citizen, and I'm a step above Joe Citizen, since I'm sitting here, it's got to be crystal clear on the website.
Absolutely should be. I'm just telling you, until you see it as an engaged parent, you're not going to see it.
It's true.
You just, you just don't.
It's true. And it's the frustration we have.
Right, because we're trying to put it out.
Which is why we just need to keep doing it again and again.
And that's your point. Keep messaging in the right way.
Again and again.
And I completely agree.
Again, I have another question. How, what are we doing, you know, one of the questions we had at the beginning was how there was going to be some kind of coordination, cooperation with the Park District and with the.
That's not for Brian to answer.
Commercial entities, you know, like the square. I mean, we talked about how it trickled down.
Why don't you talk about the private property owners?
The private property.
Please.
And we'll talk about Park District.
Okay.
Thank you. The private property agreements, Ben and I have been working very closely on, I guess, finalizing what we want to present to the private property owners, the property owners. We are, I would have to say, probably less than a week away until we have that finalized copy of what we want to present. The original draft was too broad.
Yeah.
So we want, so Ben and I have been working and narrowing it down, that down. So we are, we're really close to getting that. I know, I know Mauk will have no issues with it. Deerfield Center shouldn't, there's a lot, I don't see a big problem with the center at town.
But we have to get it to the point where it's consistent, and it's simple, and it's enforceable and understandable by the property owners.
Right, and one of the things that we tried to come up with was a good template, because the village, going back decades, has had agreements with different property owners.
Yes.
And they're different, and some of them are dated, and a lot of them are not in place anymore. And so part of it is, we don't want to have confusion by having with one property owner and one agreement, and then the police aren't going to know on a daily basis that somebody else has a different agreement.
Right.
So it is unifying it up, so we have one template.
Great.
So we can message it, so.
That's great.
Yep.
We've reached out to Anne-Marie of the Park District a couple of times.
Yeah.
To encourage them to do their thing.
We're still waiting to hear a final result on that.
Wow.
And that's been two months in the making, you're on.
Yes, we've reached out at least two or three times.
But the schools are cooperating, and the schools are being very responsive.
Yes.
That's one out of two.
I just, I thought the infographic that was designed to explain the details of the ordinance is very good, in my opinion. And if that was designed in-house, or if that was done with a vendor, if we're, and I agree, doing more communications, and if it's a Q and A or other ways of getting the point across, I think using that kind of style with visual communications is very effective.
Okay.
Thanks.
I have all the old ones, we can tweak them.
Park District's lack of action is because they choose not to take action.
Oh, I, I, my, my take is, they're looking at it, and they're, they've told us they're looking at it and considering it. I can't speak to their motivation. I can't speak to their deliberations. We've suggested, you know, our group, this board deliberated considerably for several months on this topic, and we're encouraging they adopt the same regulation.
It would be nice to be unified with the Park District.
That's what we've asked them to do, and we've got that.
I could tell you in Northbrook, they have little lawn signs on the paths prohibiting electronic mobility devices.
In the parks.
In the parks.
We're hoping our Park District does the same.
Further questions or discussion? Thank you.
I think, you're welcome. Here's one clarification.
Yes.
So, looking at this ordinance, and it went through several iterations when we drafted this and then revisiting this a number of times, there is one provision in it that I think can, based on my understanding of where this board landed, I think can be clarified, and it would be a benefit to do so. We didn't want to present you with an ordinance tonight until we had this discussion to see if there was anything else you wanted changed, which I take it there is not. But in subsection F, the exemptions to the ordinance, what it states is the following are exempt from the prohibitions contained in this section, one of which is an item four, a person under the age of 16 when accompanied by that person's parent or legal guardian. And it is my understanding of the true intent that that exemption really is meant to apply to the age limitation, so if somebody wanted to ride a e-scooter with their parent, they could, but not meant to exempt them from the entire section, meaning they would still be required to wear a helmet, they would still be required to comply with the speed limit. So I, so it is our recommendation that we clarify the language so, to meet the intent. And so it's just, I think in that subsection F4, you know, it's a little broad and we can, we can alter it slightly.
We can call that a Scribner's error, or whatever we want, but it does, it does require some clarity.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good point.
It's a simple fix.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that, you know.
One could construe it contrary to the intent of what we were talking about.
Right, so at your next meeting, we can present you with an ordinance that makes a quick change.
Okay. Fair enough.
It never occurred to me to be read that way.
Yep.
We will also, Your Honor, reach back out to the Park District, Deerfield Park District, to try and find out what their-
I may be. Well, in fairness, we did discuss this for months before we even had the committee of the whole meeting. So if this is a brand-new topic for them, which I have a hard time believing, it may take them a little time.
My conversations with the people I know over there said they are cooperating and they will. Good, good to know.
When you redistribute the PDF of the, what Jesse was talking about, I assume we're gonna redistribute the same one. Can you send-
Are you talking about this one?
No, there was something online.
Infographic that was shared recently on social media, it was also shared by the school district, or linking to it.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about, David?
I was just going, yes. I was just going to say, is that the one, Jesse? I thought there was a different one.
I think it's a little different, that may be an earlier iteration.
Okay.
Anyway, I was just gonna say, when you do that, if you let me know, I have no problem posting on Deerfield Moms, you know, the picture.
Somebody will.
So if you could send me a-
Somebody will.
Well, I know, but if you could send me a PDF of it, I can upload it onto my Facebook page.
Good idea.
And maybe you could do Deerfield Dads on Facebook. Just an idea.
Sure.
Thank you.
Item 2571, consideration and action on a report and review of the annual comprehensive financial report. Eric.
This is the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2024. As we did earlier tonight, we report to you internally monthly. Then, at the end of each year, we have a CPA firm come in, an independent firm comes in, looks at our numbers, issues an opinion on those. This year and for the past several years, we've had Joe Lightcap from Baker Tilly. We received, again this year, an unmodified or a clean opinion, that's the best you can get, that's what you want, and we got that again this year. So Joe's here tonight to be able to answer any questions that the board may have. Also wanted to give a special thanks to James Newman, our village, our senior accountant here at the Village. He's been here a little over a year, jumped right in with this and did a really good job on, on all the year-end adjustments and just getting that process done smoothly. So turn it over to Joe for any questions or-
Can I ask, Eric, can I ask you a question before that?
Yes.
I'm opening the meeting tomorrow at the seniors', and how long has the unbroken chain of top recommendations from our reports?
I think every, every year is-
I know, I know, I just want to know how many, because I like to include that in my report.
At least since 1984.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's probably as long as we've had, had an audit come. Maybe what you're asking about-
Over 40 years. Okay, close enough.
Over 40 years. Yep.
I'm trying to look, it's usually on the, the end of the transmitter letter.
Oh.
But I can't, I can't see it right now, but anyway. Well, thank you for having me. Before I get going with my comments, I do also like to echo Eric's statements about how the audit went and especially James and his transition into the role. It was, it was seamless and I think it was, it was a very good process, we'll just, we'll just say that, so definitely, thank you. So I just have a couple of comments tonight and two reports that I'll go over. One, very brief, the annual comprehensive financial report, which is the much larger document that you have, and then the reporting and insights from the audit process, which is our report that satisfies audit standards and our communications to the board and those charges of governance. First off, with the annual comprehensive financial report, we do, you know, believe that this report will once again qualify for the certificate of excellence in financial reporting, as the past years have. There were no new accounting pronouncements adopted during the year, so what you see in front of you is very similar in form and context from what it has the past couple of years, no big new accounting standards that put any big new liabilities or assets on the books, so very similar in form. I always like to point you to page four, the management's discussion and analysis. This is a document written by management that discusses the financial results of the year in some pretty good detail and in language that's, that's easier to understand than probably the rest of the document. The rest of the document has a lot of good detail on these numbers, but this is where I would go if I were trying to understand the Village's finances for the year in comparison with the prior year. Just a couple of high-level numbers to point out, when we look at all funds of the Village, governmental funds and general fund, and those types of funds, fund balance increased by about $437,000. So, so a very kind of minimal increase, but that is after about $7 million in capital work, including MFT road construction and transfers to the sewerage fund for debt service and admin charges to the refuse fund. So, so some good transfers out and use of the funds, and fund balance still increased a little bit. On the proprietary funds, so the water and sewer, commuter parking, those funds increased by about $1.1 million and about $4.7 million in contributions from the internal service funds. Finally, on the police pension fund, that police pension fund increased by about $4 million and is about 88% funded, so very good, you're, you know, two good kind of fiscal years in a row of investment returns in the market at 1231, so that really kind of helped the net position of the, the police pension, not that it wasn't in a good spot before, but it just continues to help that, that process. Your funded ratio is kind of, is kind of a benchmark amongst your peers, so it's very good to see. I'll take a quick pause there with the financial information before I head to the other report if there's any questions on the financial numbers of the Village. Okay. So the, the other report is our reporting and insights letter. So we have several auditing standards that we're required to report on. This letter addresses our responsibilities, management's responsibilities, significant audit areas, significant estimates in the financial information. It's really, it's really a boilerplate letter. We're required to communicate a bunch of things, but you'll see in the letter, there's a bunch of no's, and we did not see this, and those kinds of things, which is very good to see. It's what you want to see in your report. If there were difficulties with management or difficulties performing the audit, we would include that in here. Again, a good report and nothing to, nothing to report to the board. One of the other areas we look at is internal controls. We look at the Village's internal controls to help determine the nature, timing, and extent of our audit procedures. We don't provide an opinion on internal controls, but if something came to our attention that we felt the board should know about, it would be in this letter. And once again, there is no internal control comments to report to the board. So, so again, broken record, clean report. Finally, the last few pages are two-way communications regarding your audit. It's really geared towards next year's audit, so we work with management to perform the audit, but we ultimately work for the board and we, we like your input, your insights. Have you have any questions or concerns, you know, throughout the year, not just when I'm up here at year end, but throughout the year, if you have anything you'd like to discuss? Happy to talk to you about that, and my contact information is on the second page of the report, email and phone number, should you need it. That'll take up any other questions on the audit.
I just have a couple of things I want to highlight from looking at the comprehensive financial report. One, our bond rating again is AAA, which is great and a testament, Eric, to your-
Best it can be.
Yep, to, testament to you and your team, and it's been this way for a number of years, and we'll continue doing that for years to come, I'm sure. The other thing is Roman numeral two, page Roman numeral two, under the comprehensive plan, talks about the fact that we have a very low unemployment rate, lower than Lake County, lower than the state, which is great. We're putting people to work here, which is wonderful. Our median, median household income is high, giving us some great opportunities, and that our commercial activity was also pretty robust. And then one other comment, if I can find it here. The Village retired $2.63 million of general obligation debt last year, and did not issue any debt last year as well. So those are just some highlights, just jump out among the 130,000-page report that you gave to us, which is always is very comprehensive and very good. So thank you for your help in putting this together, we're pleased with your report to us. Questions?
I also had a, what struck me reading through here in terms of our long-term debt, according to the report, total Village debt represented 3.23% of our 2023 equalized assessed value compared to other municipalities. How are we doing?
That's a good question. I, I don't know off the top of my head, but nothing strikes me as, I mean, it's, it's a good number, nothing is alarming when we're looking at that. You know, different communities, they, they look at things differently, right? Like some are more funded, like go for, out for bonds, to pay for construction, to look out into the future, those future residents are gonna pay for those debt service payments. Your, kind of, a lot of the work you're doing now is funded through fund balance and current revenues, so it's just kind of different ways of looking at it, but nothing of concern was too bad.
But it's a relatively low number.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're gonna talk about that at your, maybe the whole meeting in just a second. But I would also, Your Honor, I'd like to remind the board, this is a report from our independent auditors to you, this is not Eric's report about what's going on. So this, this is a responsibility that they have to you to report on the accuracy of our finances.
Yes.
Do you want me to say the number? Do you know the number? The library debt? Okay, okay, yep. And we did not find any significant adjustments in our report, so the, the numbers you're hearing from, from Eric on his presentations, you know, we're not adjusting those in any significant way, so you're, you're hearing the story throughout the year too and not just at year end, which is important.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comments on this? Do I have a motion to accept the report and review of the annual comprehensive financial report?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
And trustee Benton.
Yes. Motion passed.
James, Eric, thank you.
Yeah, great job, guys, especially James, one year in, there's a lot of stuff going on with transition, and you really stepped up and did a great job, so thank you for your work. New business, item 2569, resolution awarding purchase of server and storage hardware. Matt?
I have for you tonight a request to purchase server and storage hardware. The items in this collection of equipment are between six and nine years old. It's run its course, it's time to replace it. The reasons to replace the equipment proactively are for expectation of reliable operation, access to support and maintenance, critical software and security updates, software compatibility, and increased performance and capacity to keep up with growth that we've experienced and expect to experience over time. We've solicited several quotes from resellers, the lowest of which was $86,230.93, also requesting waiver of competitive bidding due to the industry practices for pricing this equipment. You can see there's quite a range in the list of prices that we received, which is very indicative of that happening.
Does anyone have any questions for Matt? Is there a motion to award the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
And my motion also included waiving the competitive bidding.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Item 2572, resolution waiving bidding and approving the award of contract to Urban SDK Inc. for data analytics and traffic management software. Sergeant Foster.
Good evening, Board. So you don't know me, my name is Brian Foster, I'm a sergeant with the Police Department. One of my duties is the traffic enforcement, traffic complaints that come in through the Village. Myself and the department has done a lot of comprehensive research on Urban SDK, which is a traffic software company that provides real-time data. It is, in an effort to enhance traffic safety as well as public safety, it would in essence be replacing our speed boards that you may have seen throughout the Village. So instead of, give you an example, now if a resident calls and says, I have a lot of speeding autos coming down my street, what we would do is we would deploy the speed board and give it time to collect data, which is usually seven to 10 days, and then from there, we would look at the data and determine whether or not there is actually a cause for concern in regards to speeding. However, we're never really gonna get that data from when the resident called us, we'll never have that specific data. With Urban SDK through vehicle electronics, we get real-time data. So if we get a resident who calls and says, I have speeding autos coming down, you know, Greenwood, we would be able to go to this software, click on the specific location on Greenwood where they're calling, and get, within a day, get the specific data of when they called in the complaint of the speeding autos.
So one feature for that too would be for, we could use it for planning purposes.
Correct. It is a multi-department use tool.
Speed limit analysis.
Yes, it collects volumes of vehicles that are traveling in a specific area, it collects speed data to make sure that speed is in compliance. It also gives us the ability to visualize roadway safety trends, such as traffic control devices and speed limits, you know, throughout the Village as well, and it is a multi-department use tool. I know that I have reached out to Public Works in regards to how they could use it to their benefit, as well as possibly the Engineering Department as well, for utilization of roadway maintenance, planning, infrastructure improvements, things of that nature.
And what is the award that, that you, you would recommend that we make? How much?
The recommendation is that we waive the competitive bidding and approve, enter our agreement. For this year, 2025, we would enter into a prorated fee of $8,921.25. This would be taken from the police DUI fund.
Okay.
So the data that's collected, forgive me, because I'm having difficulty understanding this, it's, it sounds like- this, it's, it sounds like magic a little bit.
Yeah.
The data that's collected, that's collected from police vehicles or do we have?
Black cameras?
Cameras that we put somewhere or are there, I don't know.
It's from personal vehicles. It's not from police vehicles.
Okay.
So it's from Apple CarPlay, OnStar vehicles that are, personal vehicles that are driven on the streets throughout the village.
So we pull the data from, from personal vehicles.
Correct.
Into this software system.
This company, yes, has entered.
And that will tell us where, how.
Vehicles on Deerfield Road are going, so how fast.
Right. And how fast the car is going or how many cars are traveling down Deerfield Road from one to two on a Saturday morning.
Correct.
And so we don't have problems with legality or privacy or anything in that regard?
We get no information from the vehicle, like what type of vehicle it is, VIN number, who is driving, no license plate, it's.
There's no personal information?
No personal information is given to us.
Aggregate data, not individual.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I would think that if it's like OnStar or some other product that is Apple or whatnot, when you put it on, when it's on your car, you are basically agreeing that they may.
The public.
Share that data.
Okay.
You've agreed that they may share that data with all sorts of people, one of which might be Urban SDK, who then takes that data and can then model with it because they've collected it from all these various sources.
So we're tapping into the magical interweb to find all the information about what's going on on the streets, essentially?
Yes, essentially.
Okay.
But it's not, but it's not individual data. So if you, if you say, and we've talked about, you know, there are engineering standards, if forty percent of the vehicles are exceeding by ten percent the speed limit on this road or whatever that analytic is.
Then we know we have a problem.
Then you can say there's a challenge.
Right.
And then these guys can say, I need to do selective enforcement on this road because of X, Y, and Z, right? It helps you figure that out.
It's kind of amazing.
Kindness.
It's amazing.
And it's only nine thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand dollars or so.
For this year.
For this year.
For a full year, right.
Right. So it's, I think a good bargain.
Were there other programs that were reviewed?
Other vendors or other service providers?
Yep.
There were not, no.
Okay. How did you guys come in to, to learn about this particular tool then?
I reached, I found this company while searching different ways to obtain traffic data.
Yeah.
And I reached out to this vendor specifically, and we've done comprehensive demonstrations of their software and just.
Was there a problem or an issue to begin with that prompted an interest in?
Not just, not a problem, it's just the fact that this data comes real-time and we're able to get, get it quicker, kind of like the, the example I provided. If I get a traffic complaint now.
Yep.
It usually takes ten days minimum for me to realize if there's a problem or not. I mean, we can have patrol go out there and have patrol monitor the area, but to put the speed board up to collect the data, you know, analyze the data.
I get it. You can deploy your resources more intelligently, efficiently.
Precisely, right.
And is there any kind of reporting or kind of like public feedback as to what you are collecting in terms of where there are speed violations or other types of public violations going on?
Meaning like can we provide the report to the individual who's complaining about the speed?
Really just the public. I mean, if we have this amazing tool, I think it would be kind of interesting for the public to understand, you know, here's where the police department has identified X, Y, Z and issue based on the data that we are collecting, and here is what the police department is doing in order to address that. In other words, demonstrating that this tool is helping the department be proactive in keeping the community safe.
Yes, there is ways to export reports from the program, and the program itself will notify, excuse me, notify us.
Yeah.
Of the problem areas to be proactive in, in putting patrol in the right areas.
Yeah, I think my, my point here, I, as I'm thinking aloud here, apologize, but if we're investing in this really powerful tool, I think that we should show value to the community of how it's being used, right? And we can do that through the reports that we're generating, through the actions and follow-up from the police department, et cetera.
Yes.
Be great to see that.
As an example, Jesse, if, if the results come where thirty-three percent of the cars on Deerfield Road are exceeding the speed limit by ten miles an hour in the third quarter of this year, dude, slow down. It'd be, it'd be fun to report that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the kind of, that's the kind of.
Right.
How do you report that out to the public so that when these guys are pulling people over on Deerfield Road, there's a reason, because thirty-three percent of the cars are exceeding the speed limit by ten miles an hour, right? That, that's.
As a resident, I would appreciate, let's say, knowing in advance that, hey, you can expect enhanced policing.
Enforcement because of.
Right. Going on in this road and generally these times.
And this can coincide with the traffic grants that we do. I know that social media basically says, you know, that police are going to be in enforcement for seatbelt violations, self-loan violations, speeding violations. This can tie in with our traffic grants to say that with, through this program, we were able to determine that, you know, a quarter of the vehicles that are traveling down Deerfield Road are over the posted speed limit. We're going to be out in enforcement.
I think that's a, a great suggestion.
That's, that's selective enforcement because you've demonstrated there's a problem.
Right.
And we're responding to the data.
Right.
Of speeders, and now these guys are out there.
Yep.
You know, that, that's the cause and effect thing, right? That's awesome.
Yeah. So let's, let's communicate that. I think this is a very smart investment by the department. I applaud you guys for looking into this and suggesting that this is the way we should go. Thank you.
And, Your Honor, I want to thank Brian and his team for working on this, and a great job. Thanks, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
And this resolution does include the wa, waiving of bidding? Roll call.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
And trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
I have a support discussion with my mayor and the board of trustees. Couple of things on my list. Friday, I took a tour of our projects with Bob, Tyler, and Steve, and we went through some of the construction projects, Pulte, Down Lake Cook, Continental, Fenn Point, in Bob's truck, and it was really useful to see what's going on. So thank you guys for doing that again. Our last food truck, Food Truck Wednesday is this Wednesday, August twentieth, from four-thirty to eight-thirty at Park Avenue. We'll have twelve vendors, and let's hope it doesn't rain.
But they're supposed to be okay.
There's going to be live music by Bad Rooster. The Reuse Arama is this Sunday, August twenty-fourth, at North Shore Unitarian Church, from noon to three, paper shredding, recycled shoes, clothes, books, and fire extinguishers, fire extinguishers and more. On August twenty-seventh, I would invite the board to join me for ribbon cutting for CNTR Yoga at seven-seventy Deerfield Road at four-fifteen. Our next board meeting is not going to be on Monday, it's going to be on Tuesday, September second because of Labor Day. Harvest Fest is September twentieth on Park Avenue from ten-thirty to two, sorry, from two-thirty to ten. We'll have bands, car show, food, vendors, bag, tournaments, carnival games. It's a great day. It's a great day. And then we're going to adjourn to committee of the whole. Following any trustee comments, we'll go into committee of the whole and pick up what we left off from Wednesday.
I had one. I just wanted to also extend a thank you. Tyler took me on a field trip last week to see the vendor who does our natural, our native plantings. And we went to see a prairie remnant in Northbrook that he works near, and we had a really great meeting with him, and I was very impressed by his expertise and their commitment to making all our native, our natural areas here in town, what they are and be as useful and beautiful as they're going to be, prior to them starting the project along the railroad tracks, all up and down Waukegan Road, and then next year on the other side of the track. So it was very impressive. It was great.
And just want to remind the board that we will make staff available for those tours at any time you're interested in seeing demonstration projects for things we're working on. So please do not hesitate to ask. Staff is available, we'll make them available.
So I'm going to suggest maybe a five-minute break, stretch break, water break, whatever, and then come back. We'll maybe go for an hour or so, nine-thirty, between nine-thirty and ten.
Okay.
And then see what we accomplish. So having said that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to clarify, this is adjournment of the regular meeting.